Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Bowie is absent.
Alrighty, thank you. May I please ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation? And then, John, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Yes, members of the House, could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear gracious Lord, we thank you for your many blessings and ask that you would be with us here tonight. May you empower us, refresh us, and enrich us so that we can seek to achieve the best solutions and outcomes for our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Thank you. The pledged face of the flag, the right to have it removed, place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is trans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Alrighty, that will take us on to oral communications, and I do have a couple cards. Starting with Rahina Khan. Rahina Khan. Oops. It's only two cards, so I'll do it right after.
Do you want to, do you want to pull?
Yeah, I know what you're telling me, but I already started it, and there's only two cards, so you want to do it right after that?
Okay.
Okay, Paul Hong.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmember and employee staff. I want to take this opportunity, as I shared earlier in the last time I spoke at the other room. I want to come with good news. I want to focus on positive stuff that the city employee has done. And I just got off the phone with the Vice President of the Orange County Mental Health Board, who wanted to convey his kudos to Ray from Public Work, who works on the mark, for his support of the whole program, and he was super proud of how Garden Grove City staff is working with the whole program to help the community. And I just want to focus on the good things that's going on in the city.
Thank you, sir. No Rahina? Last, last chance Rahina Khan. Okay, that's all the cards that I have. Anyone else wishing to speak who did not turn in a card?
We're just here to see you guys.
Right on. Alright, seeing none, we will close oral communications. Next, I want to pull out of order item 2B, just because there's a proclamation that goes with it. So, on our consent calendar, can we bring forward and move item 2B? I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Is, is there somebody going to present on this?
We don't have a presentation, but I will introduce Mr. David Coombs. He is, he's actually the Community Services, David, why don't you please come forward? I'll just say a few, a little bit of background, and then maybe Mr. Coombs would like to speak for a moment. But Mr. Coombs is with the Garden Grove Elks Lodge for many, many years, and he is actually here in another capacity this evening. He is an ambassador with One Legacy, which is, advocates for organ donation, and he was instrumental in helping to get the donor decal placed on the California driver's licenses. And I'll let you speak. Do you want to speak just for a couple minutes and just share a little bit about your background, David?
Oh, you probably don't want to hear me for a couple of minutes. But I'm very grateful to the help that I've received from the city with getting this proclamation done. It's, it's my desire, my, my, I guess, it's my prayer that there'll be enough donations someday that no one expires waiting for an organ. Right now, today, there is approximately 108,000 people on a waiting list waiting for an organ. And unfortunately, about 17 will expire each day, waiting for that organ. At one time, just in, not to distant past, we were able to get a pink dot on the driver's license everybody's familiar with. At first, it was a little sticker that was easy to peel off. And now it's a binding contract, that dot that goes on there, and it has greatly increased the number of organs that have been donated and saved many lives. What people don't understand in some cases too is that not only by donating organs does it save lives, but you can, you can save the life of actually eight people with organs that you have to donate. But with the rest of the donation, with the eye donation, tissue donation, and actually bone donation, you can enhance the lives of 75 people. I was so fortunate that I received a donor heart on July 25th of 2003. So my 19th year anniversary is coming up. I hope I make it to that. That's what we always hope, you know? But in the course of that, I've also had cotter bone used in my body. They used bone to fix my neck, and then again, they used bone to fix my, my back. So I might have more dead people in me than most people, but I'm, I'm very, very grateful for it. I'm very grateful, and I just wish there was something more that could be done. And I see that day coming someday. There'll be more. But, oh, I just wanted to say too, there have been some great improvements. And gosh, I wasn't more prepared. There was, there's a gland in your body that is located close to your heart, and the purpose of that gland is to actually reject organs that are transplanted. And they've come to understand that, and they've just recently have done a heart donation and donated that gland at the same time. So that gland then would not be rejecting the heart. So it's a great improvement there. And at Cedar Sinai Hospital, which I'm very, very grateful to that hospital, they have sent some people home with a totally artificial heart, manufactured artificial heart with no wires or anything attached. It does its own thing. So, so people learning. And I, I would say that I speak often, and a couple of questions that come up pretty frequently, as funny as they may seem. One is, since I had a heart donation, do I still love my wife? And some people see the, the heart as something more than a pump. But another one that comes up frequently, and it's heard that if you're a donor, that the operation, your family will have to pay for the operation to, to have the heart taken from your body and put in another, and there's no truth to that whatsoever. A donor family will pay absolutely nothing. It's all covered. And as a matter of fact, anybody in that donor family that requires counseling, that will be paid for by One Legacy also. And so anyway, that's enough. That's more than a couple of minutes.
David Coombs, thank you so much for being here, sir, and for advocating for this. It's always a pleasure to work with you in all your various capacities. We do have a beautiful proclamation. I'll come up and present this to you now, and then maybe we can take a quick picture.
Wonderful, wonderful. I'm happy to be anyplace today.
I don't know if you can get up here.
Well, you're an amazing testimony.
Okay, well, I don't know if I'm going.
You Terry?
Oh, I see.
Alright, we're looking here. One, two, and three. One more. One, two, and.
Over there.
Oh, that way.
One more, Steve. Look at Terry.
You're right, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Okay, we went out of order, and we pulled that consent item up forward. We will go back to oral communications. We've got two more cards. So Rahina, I think I saw you somewhere come in. You're up.
Good evening. How is everybody doing? Mayor, City Council.
Good to see you.
City Clerk, City Manager, and all my good neighbors, dear neighbors. Nice to see you again after a long time. And I'm here because today is Ramadan, the 12th, I mean 11th fast. We will finish, we will conclude the fast at sundown. So just to let you know that I brought some dates with me and some fruit organically grown by the California Organic Gardening Club. I'm a member. And they gave me some fruit, and there's also, there's some organic dates, I mean nuts to go. So you can have some whenever you get a chance. Please, please feel free to take it. And I also brought a calendar for Ramadan, because in Ramadan, our schedule changes. Like, we have to wake up for these days, four, four-thirty, so we can have a meal, and we have to stop eating by five. You know, and, and it goes according to the sun. Sunrise, you know, the, it's about an hour and a half roughly before sunrise that we have to stop eating. And we stop eating, then we do our morning prayer and all the prayers during the day. And, and we conclude the fast at sunset, five minutes after sunset. So during the fast, we are not allowed to eat or drink anything, or, you know, sexual relations. Those are forbidden. Then after we conclude the fast, then, you know, and Ramadan is a month of charity. So we give charity. There's a special charity in Ramadan, which is called Sadakhatul Fithar Bada. So anyway, that, that charity goes to the people who, who don't have from the, everybody pays like $12 per person in their family, and that goes to help the poor people to have at least one meal, you know, because it's, it's celebration at the time of Eid. After 29 or 30 days, we follow, we follow the lunar calendar. I always say that our, our date is on the sky. So, and at the end of the month, we celebrate it, and during the, a lot of people also, there's a, there's a compulsory, compulsory charity for the rich to give to the poor, and that is like 2.5%. It's not that much, but who, anybody who has more than $6,000 and have had it for more than a year just sitting, then they have to pay a charity on that. Like, you know, money is just sitting there, so you have to pay this. A lot of people like to calculate it and pay during Ramadan, because Ramadan, all the good deeds, they are rewarded more. Everything, you get more reward for all you do. And we believe that the devils are chained, locked up. The gates of hell are closed, and the gates of heaven are wide open. So it makes it easier, more incentive for us to do all the good deeds we can during, during this month. And it's a month of fasting. It's a month of community. Like, when we eat the meal early in the morning, that hour, everybody's home. So, you know, it's like a family meal. And in the evening also, I know that City Council has been there to our Iftar, right?
Yeah.
You don't know that. Okay, so it's the evening meal, and people are, you know, the whole community, we gather in the masjid. I don't know, somebody's alone. So, yeah, so that, that's how our, our, you know, and if you come to the masjid, it looks so beautiful with all the lights on in the night times. It's so beautiful. You're most welcome to come and visit us. And what was it? Yes, so this is the month of fasting, and something I wanted to say, but there's, you know, so charity and fasting and all that, and so I guess that's about it. So, anyway, it's been a long time since I did public speaking, and I'm out of it.
Thank you, Rahina. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, and please make sure to get some things, just some snack, you know, it's just a snack. It's not that much. But I hope you like it. Hope you enjoy it. And take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Sorry. I forgot to mention that I, I brought some English translation Quran, and one of the stories in the Quran is about Joseph. And I find it so dramatic and intriguing, intriguing the way that is presented in the Quran. The story of Joseph is very interesting, if those of you would like to see.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibbs. Longtime resident, teacher educator, longtime resident of Garden Grove. Like the previous speaker mentioned, giving back to the community is very important, and providing charity is very important as well. I want to bring, remind the community of the 2022 Garden Grove College Graduates Reception, organized by the city and sponsored by businesses and individuals. The purpose is to recognize the value of an educated workforce, to recognize the value of an educated workforce. And the sponsors promote higher education and a professional workforce in Garden Grove. And the city is seeking names and information from Garden Grove residents who will be receiving an undergraduate or postgraduate academic degree from any college or university in 2022 to be recognized on Thursday, June the 2nd, 2022. Now, the sponsors that have put this event, helped fund this event are the Garden Grove Elks Lodge 1952, the Garden Grove Shell Number One, the Garden Grove Police Association, DTN Tech, Signal Hill Petroleum, Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, and several others, including myself, Nicholas Dibbs, teacher and educator. I've been one of the co-sponsors since, since 2017. And I'm pleased, as a teacher and educator, it's something very worthwhile. So any graduates, if you know of any graduates here in Garden Grove, make sure you turn that into the City Community Relations Office so they can be recognized. And speaking of having an educated workforce, which helps improve the economy, helps improve the city, here in Garden Grove, we have 10 intermediate schools and seven high schools, comprehensive high schools. Of the 10 intermediate schools, they all lost their woodshops and metal shops, and the last two woodshops were cut in June of 2016. Four of the high schools no longer have an auto shop. This is important because for those who are not going to go on to college, it's important that they have a trade or a skill that's marketable and a living wage, and that helps improve the economy of the city, the tax base of the city, and so on. So at the, at the Garden Grove Main Street Car Show, I've been doing a survey on Friday nights. I hope you'll come down and meet me there if you can. Having a petition that asked the question, "Help bring back auto wood and other shop classes eliminated by GGUSD/USD." If you agree they should be brought back as soon as possible, please add your name. So we have over 450 names so far, and the numbers are growing, but the, the trend is clear. The community wants these shop classes back and improving and enhanced career and technical education. So I so hope those of you in the committee will come out on Friday nights at the Garden Grove Main Street Car Show and see the petition and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak that did not turn in a card? You guys still good? Alright, we will close oral communications and recess to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bridgum. Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Member Klaufenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie is absent.
Alright, we already did oral communications, consent items, just receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Hold the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Any matters from members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. And that then takes us on to consent items. We already acted on 2B, so would anyone like to move the balance, or is there any request to pull any items?
A second.
Roll call vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Alright, that takes us on to items for consideration, item 3A.
Item 3A is approval of a cooperative agreement with the City of Westminster for the rehabilitation of pavement surface on Westminster Avenue from Magnolia Street to Bouchard Street. This item is continued from the March 22nd, 2022 meeting, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a cooperative, or enter into a cooperative agreement with the City of Westminster for the rehabilitation of Westminster Avenue from Magnolia to Bouchard. Approximately one-sixth of the work proposed lies within the city boundary, which includes pavement reconstruction, some concrete related signing, and related signing and striping improvements. The project is estimated to cost the City of Garden Grove just over $520,000. If approved tonight, the project can begin before summer and should be complete by the end of summer 2022. Staff recommends approval and execution of the attached agreement. This concludes staff report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Or a motion?
I motion it.
Second.
Hold the vote. Yeah, gone, gone.
Oh.
Not coming back.
Okay. Motion received, five yes votes.
Alrighty, that takes us on to matters, and we do have one listed. So item 4A, information update on homeless resources and BeWell OC mobile response team as requested by City Manager Scott Styles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I ask staff to just give a very short PowerPoint presentation on some of our initiatives, working with the homeless in our community. And I think Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim is going to present that, or staff with Monica Cover-Rubias.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to share a few updates relating to our homeless resources. By way of background, back in fall of last year, the City Council adopted and approved our comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness. And one of the priorities identified within that effort is to raise awareness of available resources. That's currently in our programming. For the councils and for the general public's information, we had developed a homeless services dashboard, and this highlights all the individuals and the resources that are currently deployed to serve our at-risk individuals in our community. This information is updated regularly, monthly and quarterly, as each respective service providers, their reports are submitted. We've also identified on the bottom of the slide, our website, so feel free to continue to peruse all the resources that's available to support our homeless community. Next, I would like to touch upon just an update for the council, our first permanent supportive housing project in the city. It is, the developer is American Family Housing. To date, the project was initiated about six months ago. We have committed about eight mainstream vouchers to the project, and I'm pleased to report about 50% of those units have been now occupied, with the remaining anticipated to be completed in the next 30 days. Now, I would like to invite up Tam Nguyen. He is part of our Garden Grove Hope Team and the supervisor, and to share a few highlights about our BeWell effort.
Good evening, Mayor and the members of council. My name is Tam Nguyen. And as a military veteran and a citizen of this city of Garden Grove, it is an honor to serve my hometown. So I am the supervisor for BeWell, and I would like to highlight a story that highlights some of the difficulties and triumphs that we've had in the beginning. One story in specific, we saw on our dispatch computer that there was a domestic dispute. We requested dispatch to be attached to that call. Once we arrived on scene, the police officers said, "No, I think we're good. We don't need you." So we circled around the cul-de-sac, and we made our way out, and then he kind of waved us down. And he asked us, "Are you guys able to, you know, counsel adolescents?" And we said, "Of course." So we, we got out of the van, and we got the report from the police officers. Basically, the father was frightened because his daughter threw a plate down, but she had a history of suicidal ideation. She was a prior cutter. And so when we arrived on scene, she was laying in a hallway on the floor with the broken plate next to her, a police officer standing over her. She was extremely frightened and scared and angry and every single emotion you can imagine. At that point, my counselor walked up to her, actually sat beside her at ground level, and started to listen to what, you know, she was going through and empathized with her. During that course of time, I was outside with the family. The family was Vietnamese speaking primarily, and I was listening to their story of what happened over the course of the last 15 minutes. Basically, the father didn't know what was going on. He was extremely scared and just out of impulse just called 911, not knowing what the repercussions would have been. The grandmother was saying she didn't understand why the daughter wouldn't open up the door for her room so that she can clean up. And then, you know, we find out that the daughter kind of wanted her privacy. So this highlights a really good point that at the beginning of this program, we were still new, and the police, the dispatch, even the community did not know of the resources. And we have come strides since then. And we have done a tremendous outreach and education to the community. We have outreach to schools, libraries, hotels, businesses, religious centers, as well as the transient community. Here, you can see the numbers. This last call was an example of the 81% that we do not transport, that is resolved in the community. We de-escalated the scenario, and we mediated between the family members, and that was very, very advantageous. Because if it did escalate further, someone might have been put into jail or possibly into the hospital. And that's typically the course that we see. Currently, we are on track. So since the launch, we are at 967 calls. That averages to 161 calls a month. That averages down to about five calls a day for service. The progress that we have made in outreach and education has been extreme. And in this month alone, we are on course to have an average of 8.5 calls a day. Some days, we've reached 13 calls, and that's within a 12-hour period. You know, so basically, it is non-stop. I am also proud to present that we are going to be extending our hours to 18 hours within the next two weeks. And then a full implementation of the 18 hours, seven days a week, once July starts. So it's going to be a progressive rollout. So, it's going to be a progressive rollout, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tam. And our next slide will touch upon parts of our comprehensive strategic plan, or known as CEASPA. We have been successful in large part due to our local service providers that partner in delivering our homeless programs and services. As you note, there's 10 service programs that we are in partnership with. Just an example, Stand Up For Kids provides workforce development to our transitional youth population. We work closely with CineNet, with Street Outreach, and with Ocapico, with workforce development, just to name a few. Certainly, much of our gratitude and support comes from our Garden Grove Police Department with Chief Deray and the SRT, collectively supporting in partnership with all of our service providers. Lastly, the CEASPA not only addresses our historical efforts in that document, it also identifies our current programs that are currently deployed. It also explores opportunities for innovation in delivering full service of continuum of care resources to our at-risk population. Staff will continue to explore opportunities to identify resources. On our screen, on the, that you will see, is an area that depicts the overlay zone for types of navigation centers. Staff is continuing to explore this effort as we continue to implement the goals and objectives of our CEASPA. Thank you, council, for your continued support on this effort as we continue to expand our resources in the homeless resources site. This concludes staff's presentation.
So much. I just want to start by commenting, I'm just a huge fan of all the great work that you guys are doing with Be Well OC. I see you guys everywhere, almost daily, flying around town doing stuff, so it's just a great void that you guys have come in and filled in such a compassionate manner. So, I'm really thrilled to have you guys in town, and thanks, Lisa, for your updates as well. Colleagues, any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members, we also wanted to add one more slide, just to remind the community, and certainly council members know about this. So, you know, we're still working on our path to try and find a suitable navigation center that would help with some housing of our homeless, and I just wanted to remind everyone watching that we do have a homeless overlay district that we're focused on. The district is in Councilmember Kim Wynn's district, District 6. You can see the boundaries here of where that is. You can go on our website and see that. So, we have been trying to endeavor to find a really good location in this overlay district of what might be a suitable focus for a navigation center. We've also have conversations with our neighboring cities to see if we could partner on something together, and so, you know, we're continuing to look very actively in this area, and we'll certainly be talking more with council members if we're able to find a facility that might work. We all know the price of real estate, you know, in Southern California right now, but we're working very hard on this, and we're hoping at some point we can come back and talk to council members about something that might be available. So, we wanted to at least mention that, too, and make sure you know it's on our radar, and we're working on it.
Great. Thank you. Colleagues, anything?
I just wanted to add, it's been a long road. I know this has been the biggest topic in the last decade, really, in the county, and I think Garden Grove's really stepped up in wherever we could along the way in the last six years that I'm aware of, and little by little, we're chopping away at addressing this problem we have, and trying to educate folks on what's available and the resources available to get the right care to the person that needs it. So, I can't be more excited about Garden Grove's position to help out with the whole county situation, and I know the county, you know, with all the stuff that's been happening, remember, everybody remembers the riverbed when we had thousands of people really living there. We've come a long way since those days, so, and I think Garden Grove has been lockstep. I know the mayor's been involved with Judge Carter and the county, dealing with that every step of the way. Garden Grove has done whatever we can do to help. So, we're still in that mode, and we're still moving forward, so thank, and thank you for the staff. This is not easy to put all this together, the statistics, the work that's done on the street, all the staff time, everybody's time. It's a huge effort, and everybody's done an excellent job, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that issue?
No, just a quick question of staff. I saw almost 1,000 calls responded to since they started. You know, that's awesome. It's a lot of work. I know it's a collaborative effort between Garden Grove and Huntington Beach. Are those all just in Garden Grove, those calls, or is that both cities combined?
Councilmember Bridgum, those are all Garden Grove calls.
Okay. So, it's a lot of work they're doing in Garden Grove, so you guys keep up the good work.
Just wanted to chime in a little bit, is that a big kudo to the team, because I do see them everywhere across the city, actually, and right now, in the community, actually recognize the blue color van, the blue van. Yeah. I think we also take a lot of credit, we have moved a long way, and we should take the credit because seeing we're the second city beside Huntington Beach, but I think Kim say it's always her idea to start with. But I think there's more city actually have follow us. I think we live Thurston and Irvine, actually start having, implementing the same program as well. But big kudo to the team. Thank you very much, and continue to make a big positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Not that it was my idea, it was just like a seed that I planted that created this wonderful thing that emerged. This started back more so as a passion project of mine back in 2016, and I know the mayor remembers vividly, I'm sure, because I sent him in quick angst a Voice of OC article related to a crisis stabilization unit facility that the county was trying to shove in Garden Grove, but didn't give us any warning, didn't work with us on it, and so, it sent us down a panic, not for me personally, as something I didn't want to do, but just that we were not involved in that process, and after reviewing the contract, I had no confidence in the ability of the vendor that the county selected to do the work and do the work right. As a healthcare professional, I review this type of material all the time, and so, I'm very well knowledgeable about what this takes and what should be done, and I didn't think that that was meeting the requirement. So, after many failed efforts to do something similar with the county, it never came to fruition, but Be Well came out as a partner, and we were able to do this wonderful mobile version of what I had envisioned, so it's really great that it's happening here, and I think what makes it even more better is to have actual residents or folks in the community out here doing that work, because there's that direct relation to our residents. So, thank you so much for being part of that, and thank you so much to staff, and of course, GGPD for all the work that they do around this. This is an amazing thing that I'd love to see expanded, and I'm excited to see where else it goes, especially with a potential navigation center. So, only looking up from here, guys, I'm really excited, and thanks to all of my colleagues for continuing to support these initiatives.
Thank you. We'll go ahead on to matters, so we'll go around the horn. George, anything?
Yeah. So, kind of a common community complaint I've received over the last two years or so, tend to get in more and more, is these oleander bushes that are going down Chapman. You know, they start on Valley View, and they periodically go throughout the whole city, but they're dying. I guess there's some kind of bacteria or something that kills oleanders, and they're not native, so, anyway, there is going to be a community meeting on this, so we can determine how we're going to address the dying oleanders throughout our city. They're predominantly along Chapman. A lot of them are in West Garden Grove, but there are some throughout the city. I think there's some over in John's area, and actually, I think there's some in your area, too. But, anyway, the meeting is going to be here at the Community Meeting Center, April 28th at 6:00 PM. The city is going to provide three different ideas they've come up with on addressing these things and different kind of foliage that they'll replace with, and they would like to get as much public input on which one of those plans is going to get the most footing, so we can start this project before we have a desert on our hands. So, please show up if you can and provide input to our city staff on April 28th at 6:00 PM, right here at Community Meeting Center.
Tom O'Neil.
Thank you. Just real quick, couple items, just a little safety tips, smoke detectors, check your batteries. We're getting into pool season, you know, so please, if you have a pool, please make sure you have gates around your pool, so no toddlers or people that, you know, can't get in there. That's very important, very important, the pool safety. Thirdly, just, you know, check your sprinklers. We are kind of in a drought and a water situation, so if you have automatic sprinklers at your house, please make sure it's operating correctly, you don't have any broken sprinklers, and then you don't need a whole lot of time per station. I recommend eight, you know, depending on if you're watering every day, you shouldn't need more than eight, seven or eight minutes per station. If you're watering every other day, maybe a few minutes more, but you don't need a lot of water to keep things green, and we would love you to have, keep things green in Garden Grove, so just check all those items, you know, getting ready for the summer. Thank you.
This week is the Garden Grove GCU Unified School District is on the spring break, so just want the, wish all the students enjoy the whole week, be safe, and that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Great. Kim?
Just two quick things. First, on, there's an echo, so three things. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but it's driving me nuts. Sorry. So, second thing, on April 21st at 5:30 PM, I'd like to invite my colleagues to the Huntington Beach Senior Center. The Orange County Division is having its general meeting, so I'd love for you to be in attendance. I'm the only one that ever goes, but I would love for other Garden Grove City Council members to participate. Last item for me is, today we passed a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, SAM. This year's theme is building safe online spaces together. I first want to thank my colleagues and city staff for all of the support that they have provided over the years around SAM. Last year, over 18 cities in Orange County participated in proclaiming April as SAM, and I'm overjoyed to share that this year, the cities of Laguna Hills, Yerba Linda, and Fullerton, three cities which did not proclaim SAM last year are doing so this year, so I'm really excited that more cities are doing it, and I believe that there's a couple other cities outside of Orange County that will be doing it as well. I'd like to invite everyone in the community, and my colleagues especially, city staff, Scott, hopefully you'll allow for casual day. On Wednesday, April 27th, hoping to have our second annual denim day community photo by the large erudon deck, did I say that right? Chairs across, that way, not across the way, sorry. Just to jog everyone's memory, denim day started in 1999 as a result of an international protest of the Italian Supreme Court decision that overturned a rape conviction because the victim wore tight pants, and the theory was if she was wearing extremely tight jeans, then she had to have consented by helping remove those jeans. So, this protest has happened internationally ever since then, and so, for me personally as a survivor, it's always been a great event, sometimes really emotional to have a lot of our community come out wearing denim and participate in this. Prior to the first annual last year, I know that city staff and some of my colleagues have sent me selfies of themselves in denim, which really just fed my soul, so I appreciate all of that, and I hope to see many folks this year during the denim day photo. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report out, or any need for closed session?
Yes, Mayor, we did have two closed session items earlier this evening, and there is no report or action out of those two items.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, just two quick words of thanks. First of all, I want to really commend and thank our Laura Stover and her team in human resources, along with, I believe, Ann Eifert in the Finance Department, Lisa Kim in my office, Captain Assistant Chief Alfara concluding our police officer negotiations that you approved tonight, and really, great thanks to our Police Officer Association as well. We've always had a great relationship between staff and the Police Officer Association in concluding labor negotiations with them. It's always been very respectful and very professional, and once again, that's proved to be so. Thanks to council members for your assistance throughout the process. I think it reflects very well on our community, so I wanted to thank everybody involved in that. A lot of hard work goes into it on all sides, and everyone's to be commended. The other thing I wanted to mention is that really great thanks to a lot of people, including, and most of all, a lot of our staff, for the great Open Streets event that happened just a week ago? It was last weekend. Wow. We had a great turnout, just a lot of success. John Montan, I want to just say John Montanes, all of his staff, especially Mark Freeman and Jennifer Goddard, just did a tremendous amount of work preparing for it. I must thank our police department for helping to get the, controlling the streets. Our special resources team officers were very involved. Public Works did a lot of work on the trail, cleaning, mural preparation, graffiti removal. They brought out a lot of their equipment for the residents in the community to see. Public Works Engineering really prepared a safe traffic control plan for us. Code enforcement was out clearing the route and helping us out. Our graphics and IT department staff did a lot of work with signage, web design, flyers, everything that goes into it. Finance did all the little things like making sure all the insurance documents were approved, and vendors got paid. Community Relations Cable for all their marketing and video work that they did. So, really, just, and a lot of people in my office and the manager's office, community development, did a lot of work. So, really, thanks to everybody involved. We felt it was a great event. I see the mayor is no worse for wear for some of his activities. So, again, and thanks to council members for all your support. We felt everybody was really excited about it and really enjoyed putting the event on for the community, so.
It was a wonderful event. Kudos to Garden Grove School District and the art program, the wonderful art program we have here in town as well, Art in Park. With that, we will stand adjourned very early this evening, so enjoy the rest of your night, everyone, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.
Bye.
Good night.